Can y'all hear me? Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I think we've got some folks watching online and home. And thank you for those of you that have joined us in person tonight. I want to welcome you to the Town Hall for the ALEAF Independent School District Superintendent Search. The purpose of the meeting tonight is so that we can hear the interests of the community to build a profile for the board for ALEAF to conduct the superintendent search. Let me start reintroducing myself. My name is Sue Diegard. I am a senior consultant, a senior search consultant with JG Associates Consulting Firm, who has been hired by the ALEAF Board to conduct this search. And I'm going to let my colleagues here introduce themselves.
Well, good evening. My name is Michael. Good evening. My name is Michael. As I was telling some ALEAF staff here, it's really nice to be back home, so to speak. I actually started my teaching career at Elsie High School, Elsie High School back in the day. So it's nice to be back. Like Sidhu, I'm one of the senior consultants here to be with you this evening to help you develop your profile of your next superintendent. We're excited to be here and look forward to working with ALEAF and the community members through the entire process. Thank you.
I'm Andres Garcia. I'm a coordinator at JG Consulting. I'm here to assist in translating in Spanish on a need basis. So if anybody here, and I'll go ahead and introduce to the folks watching online, if any questions are needed translated in Spanish, please let me know. And I will do my best to translate the question and the response given in Spanish. Thanks.
Thank you. And one thing I would miss sharing about myself, I'm also a sitting trustee in the Houston Independent School District. And we went through this process a couple of years ago with JG Consulting for our superintendent, and I'm also a former parent in HISD. So I very much understand the process that your community is going through. Tonight is about listening to the community. And I'm going to ask a handful of questions to get feedback and information from community stakeholders, both here in person and those of you who are online. If you're here in person, you can come up to the mic to speak here at the podium in the front. If you are joining us online, if you would please enter your comments in the chat function. And my colleague, Michael, will then read them aloud so that everybody can hear that input. A clarification based on a question I heard last night is our consulting firm does not decide or hire your superintendent. We are just the ones that are helping support your board. And they ultimately will be the ones that hired your superintendent. There is also a website where you can find out the timeline or information about the search process, and that is at alefisd.net. There is also a link on that page to a survey. I encourage you to fill out that survey. I encourage you to share this link with your friends and fellow parents and community members. So if they can't attend one of these meetings, they have an opportunity to also share their input. And there is also a schedule on there of other upcoming meetings, as well as a timeline of the search process for your district. Couple of guardrails for the conversation tonight. Please share your time with others, stay on the questions. We're not able to solve the problems of your district. We're just trying to help get information from you so that we can make sure we build an accurate profile that is reflective of the vision and values of your community as your board hires your superintendent. So I'm going to begin with the first question. And that is, what are your current hopes and aspirations for the students of the ALEAF Independent School District? So those of you in the room, if you would like to come share your thoughts upfront, you may. Or, Michael, if anyone online?
I don't have any comments yet, but hopefully we'll have someone type something in. We have a speaker coming right now.
Good evening. And make sure you stay close to the microphone.
Once again, Daniel Barone, ALEAF, Parent Taxpayer Alumnus. I think what I want for our students is to have leadership for individuals that's in charge of making decisions, understand our community. I was three minutes late yesterday when I walked in because traffic was bad. I have the privilege of having a vehicle. That was why I shared yesterday that 85% of our community is socially economically disadvantaged. So it's four miles from the avenue building to here. It takes at least two or three bus, public buses to get here, well over an hour. So I was expressing that concern because when I walked in, the very first thing that I heard when I set up was, "We're going to try to get you out of here because we know tonight is a school night and we know we want to get you all to suffer." Well, I didn't travel all the way over here for this hour. We didn't worry about what time I eat lunch. I've already made that sacrifice. So I need us to focus on our educating our kids. And if I'm sacrificing the time to come, I need you to give me the time and my taxpayers, both when I come in and try to express my concerns and make a difference in our community. So that's what I do for our kids. If you were concerned about our hunger, then you could have brought some snacks, the whole story. I can see that. The very last thing on that point is, you let us out 13 minutes early. And I was disappointed about that, again, focusing on our community as coming in public transportation. When I walked outside those doors after talking to one of the administrators as well as one of the police officers, there was a gentleman walking up that had just got off the work bus. So he had tried up here. He wasn't, his voice heard. He was a welder. He said he was a commercial welder. While he walked up to me and had a conversation with me, I have no idea. But that just went to prove my point in regards to that not focusing on the community in which you serve when you're trying to make decisions, you won't be able to decide through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our new attendees who have just joined us. Thank you for coming on out tonight. We are gathering information from the community on actually what's working in your district, what your aspirations are for your children, so on and so forth, to build a profile so that your board can find a new superintendent for your district. And so we want to get as much information we can from as many stakeholders as we can. So thank you for coming out. The first question that I presented tonight is, what are the hopes and aspirations that you have for the students of the ALEAF Independent School District? And so if you are interested in sharing your thoughts, please join us up here at the podium. And I'm also going to chime in with you, Michael, to see if anyone online has shared any thoughts.
We don't have any comments online yet.
Okay, thank you. If you don't have to, if you don't want to. Okay. And so I have the next question is, what are some current celebrations in ALEAF ISD? Like, what are some strengths that you really want to make sure that a superintendent candidate for your district knows about your district that is something that you highly value?
Greetings. Daniel Barone, ALEAF, Parent Taxpayer Alumnus. I want to apologize. I didn't give a recommendation for a solution to the concern that I expressed. So my recommendation, the gentleman yesterday talked about, he likes sports. So this is for him and sports analogy. And any sports game that you do, you watch film on the opponent, right? You're not just concerned about how you practice, you're concerned about how they practice. So my recommendation for you all and anybody in the district is, leave your vehicle here. Have someone in the district. Call me. I'll come and pick you up and drop you off. We got 46 schools in the district. Catch a school bus back to your vehicle and try to make this meeting or set up for this meeting and see how difficult it is. So don't just take my word for it. Leave your vehicle here. Go to any one of the 46 schools in our district. Pick the closest one or the furthest one. And watch the challenges that we face for our community and our public transportation. Don't take our word for a thing.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Hello, I'm Felicia Robinson, and I'm also a taxpayer. I also make taxpayer and live in the ALEAF community. And my children have also graduated from ALEAF Taylor High School and have been in Taylor, I mean, been in ALEAF school district, all of their lives. Some of the glories that I see is that I love the diversity that we have in ALEAF school district. And I love the new buildings that we have. I really love the new center that you have for the pre-K. But I'm also an educator at Olive Middle School, which is one of the older middle schools in our district. And believe it or not, I'm the only one that's out in the portable and another lady is out in the portable. And I think they should have been gone years ago. So what I'd like to see is inclusion. I like to see, not just because of what your grade is in the school district and the school is older, that the things need to be replaced, then put that on the list. I also work with the bond committee. And I think we're next in line because we are one of the older schools. But two other elementary schools were in bigger need. And Olive needs to be repaired, okay? I love the transparency. I like for the superintendent to have transparency. Transparency. I come to the board meetings. And yes, I hear the rhetoric that goes along with the board meetings. But I don't see concerns getting done. If that, if, what I'm saying by that is, if we are $19 million in a deficit, I think you could have found that quicker than now. So I'd like to see more transparency among our board members. I'd like to see a little more participation from the community. I would really like to see that. And overall, I love ALEAF. I love the diversity in ALEAF. And I think this is a good district and it can be said. I'm also an educator too. And I'm pleased with my job. I love teaching. I love giving back to the children. But I think we need to change some things in education. And I believe ALEAF is an innovative district. We've always been number one, and I'd like to see us come back to that status. Thank you.
Thank you. For those of us who are joining us here in the room and also for anybody who has just now joined us online, I just want to give a little recap on what this evening's meeting is about. And to reintroduce myself, I'm Sue Diegard. I'm a senior search consultant with JG Consulting, who we have hired by your board to help facilitate the superintendent search for your board. And my colleagues here are available for translation. And they also are taking notes of the comments that are shared to the different questions tonight. And just to be clear, I don't work for the district other than through JG Consulting. And my other habit is I serve as a trustee on the HISD school board. So the questions that we've asked so far, for those of you who are joining us, and let me chime in with you, Michael. Has anybody shared any comments in the chat?
Yes, we have one comment regarding requesting us to post questions online. So we are posting the questions as we go through this evening's meeting. We appreciate all of those that are online. We have question one and two up posted online. By all means, if anyone just joined us online, feel free to comment on question one or question two. They're right there where you can read them. And then, of course, I'll share your comments with the group here as those come in. But we thank you for joining us online.
Great. And those of you who are participating tonight, if you want to send out a link to a couple of friends, if they could join us online as well. So the questions that I've presented so far, so those of you who are just now joining us, if you have thoughts to share on these, as I move on to the third question, the first two I've asked are, what are your current hopes and aspirations for the ALEAF Independent School District students? What are some current celebrations in ALEAF ISD? Like, what's going really well? Are you really proud of it? You want to make sure that superintendent candidates and your future superintendent know about your district. What are your, you know, that's a great place to share what your vision and values are for your district. So my next question is, what current challenges must be overcome in order to achieve the expressed shared hopes and aspirations? So again, those of you in the room, if you've got comments to share, please come up to the podium. And those of you who are watching from home, if you would like, you can share your comments in the chat and we'll read them aloud.
Greetings. Daniel Barone, ALEAF, Parent Taxpayer Alumnus. One of the challenges I think that a candidate would have to face, I know from you personally, when Superintendent Chambers first came in our district in 2010, he had several community-based committees, which I was sought after and served on proudly and did so for three years. The committee meetings were video recorded and audio recorded, so the public can do an overhead request for those meetings in regards to the statements that I'm going to make. After three years of serving on those committees, community member Tiffany Thomas went on to become ALEAF ISD School Board Trustee Number Seven. And subsequently, Ms. Thomas became Houston City Councilwoman Tiffany Thomas in District F. Community member Natasha Butler served on those committees with me for three years as well and went on to become ALEAF ISD School Board Trustee Number Seven. Daniel Barone, myself, after sitting on three years of those committees, went on to become ALEAF ISD third grade teacher for the district. During one of those initial meetings, with all three of us attending together, involved in community, because we were involved in community involvement here, newly hired Superintendent H. Chambers said to a packed room that he, and this is the reason why I stated that the meetings were audio and video recorded, he stated that he and his administrators have the ability to make data say whatever they wanted to say. My concern is, after seeing this statement practiced and perfected, practiced and perfected action for the past 12 years, is that the administration, who Superintendent Chambers was referring to 12 years ago, are still in the district in lieu of his absence. More importantly, the administration that the superintendent and his co-like volunteer have hired made positions for throughout the district and have indoctrinated into Superintendent Chambers' ideology of making data say whatever they wanted to say are still in key positions, leadership positions, chamber ALEAF ISD in lieu of Superintendent Chambers' absence. My last concern is that 90% of the district's $428 billion annual budget goes to salaries. That means we're top-heavy. $8.56 million alone goes to the salaries of 28 administrators who work in the administration building. That's 340. ALEAF ISD gave teachers a 4% minimum wage before this school year started. The subsequent, the subsequent month after they increased their insurance premiums. So a teacher, Superintendent Chambers makes $380,000, almost $381,000. His 4%, he got $15,000. A teacher making $60,000 got $2,400,000. So my concern is that because we're top-heavy and $8.5 million of our budget goes to 28 administrators in the administration building. Yet, when you talk about budget, the young lady came up here earlier and said we were $18 million in the hole. When the district or the superintendent talks about cutting things, he talks about cutting our programs for our students. He talks about cutting our teachers. He talks about cutting our bus drivers, custodians, and maintenance workers. But never once talks about cutting the top-heavy administration. Now, I don't know, I have been saying in the district that if all of the administration called in tomorrow, our kids would still have a negative education in the ride to school and have lunches and have a perfect day of education. However, if our teachers all called in tomorrow, we'll need a waiver because we'll go 10% of our annual attendance. So I say that to say that this district needs to start taking care of our teachers and stop focusing on our top-heavy administrators. And in my humble opinion, they can start the administration building with the 28 people making $8.56 million and stop cutting our student programs and teacher services. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for those of us who have just joined us. Let me actually chime in with you, Michael, or do we have any comments online?
We don't have any comments. I'd just like to remind all those that are out there on Zoom, on the district's website, to please feel free to comment online. That's what my job is here this evening. I'll share your comments with every one of the tenants here, and it will go on record. If you don't feel comfortable doing that, obviously, you can go online and complete the district's survey. Ultimately, we'll end up seeing information, similar information, but we would love to hear from you. Don't be shy out there. Type in your messages in. Thank you.
Thank you. Those of you that have just joined us, whether in person or online, I just want to kind of share again, as I did at the start. Tonight is a town hall to hear input from community members as your board conducts a superintendent search to hire a new superintendent for your district. Myself and my colleagues, Michael and Andres, we work for JG Consulting Firm. We have been contracted by your board to assist in the process of your district hiring a new superintendent. We're not employees of ALEAF ISD or administrators for ALEAF ISD. We're here, we're building a candidate profile. We want to make sure that that profile is reflective of the vision and values of the community, that it is including, you know, the things that you think are really strong about your district, the things that you believe are challenges in your district. And then my next question is going to be about attributes that you would want in your new superintendent. And so we really want, you know, some concise input from you all so that we can build an accurate profile that's reflective of our community. So the questions for those of you who have just joined us, so feel free to chime in on these, or the fourth question which I'll present. So far, I've inquired, what are your current hopes and aspirations for the ALEAF Independent School District students? What are some current celebrations for your district, like what's going really well? What current challenges must be overcome in order to achieve the expressed shared hopes and aspirations? And then the next question I will present is, what characteristics, traits, and experiences would help the new superintendent have the best chance of moving ALEAF ISD forward and achieving your aspirations? Yes, thank you.
I'll answer our question in a brief. I believe the top three challenges of the next superintendent must prioritize. And of course, I came up with one that said the budget. And I know we always talk about the teachers and retaining the teachers that will be there to go. Also need to think about our support staff. Our support staff, which is the custodians, the food workers, the paraprofessionals, they have not been given a fair salary in quite a few years. And that really needs to be fixed. That really needs to be done. Because the minimum wage, I think, for the bus driver, I mean, for cafeteria workers, like $10 an hour, the custodian, and that's not a fair wage in this day and age. So, and especially in inflation time. So I'm looking for a superintendent that can come in, not only retain teachers, not only work on the teacher's salary, but also the support staff that goes along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts on that. Michael, do we have any new comments online?
Unfortunately, at this time, we do not. Come on out there. We need to hear from you. You're saying it here high and dry. If you have anything you'd like to share, again, we know we're on question number four right now. But you can feel free to go back and address and share anything regarding question one, two, or three. We'd love to hear from you.
So the final question that I have is, what characteristics, traits, and experiences do you believe would help the new superintendent have the best chance of moving ALEAF ISD forward towards achieving your expressed aspirations for your students?
Greetings. Daniel Barone, ALEAF, Parent Taxpayer Alumnus. I personally would like to see one of the attributes is that our new superintendent has at least a doctoral degree. It concerns me to have a Superintendent H. Chambers sitting on our board making $350,000 with a master's degree. And everybody around him supporting him, including classroom teachers, has a doctoral degree. So I feel that if you're going to be the leadership of education, then you need to model someone who is seeking higher education and has obtained higher education. In regards to the individuals that's online, I spoke yesterday and told the gentleman that, again, our community is 85% socially economically disadvantaged. We went back to school on Monday. They don't have hotspots for our children because they allegedly are upgraded to body trade. And they took the computer back last year. So during the August 24th, 2021 school board meeting, the Director of Risk Management, when discussing COVID reporting, stated at that meeting that our community members, that our community, the people in which y'all serve and are serving, don't like technology and/or don't have technology. So those individuals that you're wanting to actually get the information that from, if they don't have the ability to use technology to report something as serious as COVID-19 or not comfortable using technology, then not online right now. We need to do alternative measures to reach those individuals. Unfortunately, this district does a great job of serving the 15%. That's not socially economically disadvantaged. So I think we need to have a superintendent that is humanitarian and not a politician. And that cares more about the 85% than the 15%. Because this district gets more money for those socially economically disadvantaged students and those special ed kids, but you're not serving them for the money that you're getting. So we're top-heavy based off the finances that's given to us for the socially economically disadvantaged, but you're not serving the needs of social. You're taking our money. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make sure that all voices are heard in this process tonight. So if any of you have anything further to share in this process or anybody that has come online? Would you guys like to share? Okay, thank you. Welcome.
My, eh, eh. This is a rough translation from my... This is a comment that is being translated by someone's daughter. So this is the concern of her father being translated. So he is, okay, so Hans Chen has a concern about politics being brought into education.
Excuse, would it help if you saw the questions?
Oh, questions? Wait, is that a flyer?
No, these are just my notes.
I know you're trying really hard to help bridge the gap, so I wanted to, that makes it easier for you.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you tell your dad too that, once he has the questions, he can go online and go to the survey and fill them out as well? Yep.
The survey, right?
Yes, there's also a survey online. So is the survey translated into Chinese?
Yeah.
For ALEAF? Yes, okay. Bein' nice. Sue.
Can I ask some additional, like?
Yes, please.
Can you talk to the mic?
So here's what we're doing, is we're building a profile about, for the superintendent candidates to know about your district and for us to make sure we're adequately reflecting the attributes and characteristics of a candidate that the community would want. Anything that is a general comment about ALEAF ISD or about education in HISD would probably be more appropriate to address in a forum with your administration or your board or your school district.
But I have a question. Are you, why am I speaking in the background? Okay. Are you one to, like, ask the student thing more? Like, play it again about opinion from the student?
Sue, can someone share it with the administrators?
Yes, the students, any student can go online and complete the survey. That would have just as much input as an adult or anyone else for that matter. So please encourage anyone you know to go online. You know where the district's website is, is that correct? Okay, just go there, you can click on Superintendent Search. It will take you to the questions, the survey. And please feel free to utilize that. You know, tell as many people as possible, please.
The website is alefisd.net. And there's a button right at the tip of the top, and it'll take you to all the different information about the search process. Share it with your friends as well.
Sue, we have two comments.
Wonderful.
That's awesome.
Thank you for joining us online.
Yes, thank you. So the first comment is, hopes for ALEAF is for the district to continue to grow like it is with immersive, interactive pre-k center, to continue to cater to a growing diverse community, to continue to encourage family participation and link to learning events. And the same person submitted a second comment regarding celebrations, and they listed three. It's the two pre-k centers, the ALEAF Community Building, and we now have a program targeting two-year-olds. It's the LNNA Start Program. And so those are celebrations that are shared online, and we thank this person for doing so.
Thank you. So we still have another 30 minutes. This meeting was posted until 7 o'clock, I believe. So just out of respect for anybody who might still be en route to join us or who might sign on, you know, we'll keep hanging out here. Let me see, you know, are there any questions that anybody has about this process?
Sue, I feel like walking up, just like to share the information. If you go online, there is a calendar posted for the community. You can see when the next town hall meeting is. You can look at the timeline associated with the search. And the district will continue to populate that information as information comes available. So please, if you had access to the internet, please check out the district's website. Obviously, you can call the Communications Department as well, and I'm sure they would make the same information available if you don't have access. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Greetings, Dana Moore on ALEAF ISD Parent Taxpayer Aleness. In regards to your question of do we have any questions for you all? Now, given the information that I've shared in regards to the makeup of our community and our challenges, what, if any, changes do you all plan on making to reach out to our community, get more individuals activated and able to have their voice heard in something as serious as a superintendent search? My recommendation would be to possibly host some of these meetings online on the weekend at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock. We don't have school in, but some of us, you know, working two or three jobs or whatever, have different capabilities at that time. I say that because when the district was trying to do a bond election, they were duct taping notes to our kids' foreheads. There was sticky notes on our cars. They were going door to door, and beeping them on. So the district knows how to be in a building and how to, or address the 85% of our challenges when they want to get things done. But unfortunately, when it's time to get our voice heard, constraints are broken. So I just like to know what you all plan on, if anything, doing differently now that you have this information.
So we serve the will of your board, so we can give the feedback that is received on the process to your board for consideration of additional means of community engagement in this process.
I will add too, that JG Consulting is nimble enough to make those type of accommodations. I know we have, our next town hall meeting is scheduled for August 16th.
Right.
Same time, 6:00 p.m. And then I'll actually be back on August 18th for a town hall at noon. So we're hoping to be able to pick up people during the lunch hour as well. But as Sue shared this information, we'll go to your board. And if we need to make any accommodations, whether it's Zoom, in person, et cetera, we are willing to do that under JG Consulting.
Thank you. Give them your opinion. Don't share it with me, share it with them. So get it on the record. No, 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 please, I'm basically, I'm begging you. Share that. Got to share it, you got to get your voice heard. You got to get your voice heard. That's what I'm, that's what I'm begging and pleading. Got to get it on the mic.
This is the favorite part of anything I ever do is community engagement. I'm a bit like, my JG Consulting hat, my HISD board member hat, my mom hat, my community activist hat for kids. Like, this is worth it, y'all. Like, you know, so don't be shy. If you, if there is something, you know, we're building a profile around this for your board, and it's your profile, it's what your community wants, and we can't include anything on it if we don't know about it. So, my two cents.
Thank you.
I was just suggesting, just like you said, on a Saturday, because, like I said, I'm an educator, and I live home to come. And maybe it would be better, like, on a Saturday or something like that, so some educators could come and participate because this has to do with them and who they have in their leadership. And I'm really surprised to see the room like this. So we need to get more people to come out to give their point and voice. So I would maybe suggest a different day, Saturday, maybe a Friday evening afterward. Because at 12:00, we're in mid-gear in the classroom, doing what we have to do, so that might be a better time.
I'd like to make one comment. That's great information. If you could, network with your friends. For those that just can't make a meeting, please encourage them to go online and complete the information online. And we understand that, you know, there, people do have lives, they have children, other commitments. And we know that it's physically impossible for some people to make it to a meeting like this, no matter what time of day. But we value everyone's inputs, so please, you know, share that to the best of your ability. We sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'll add something to that. A lot of times, our families don't know what a superintendent is, right? They don't know why it matters to come and make their voice heard in these kinds of spaces. And so, you know, you guys are clearly active and involved in your district, dedicated to your district. You know, you would be great ambassadors to help others know why this is important. And even if they can't come to a meeting for whatever reason, to make sure that they have this survey and, you know, connect with the people that you know. And, hey, this is what this is. This is why your voice adds value to this process. And it is, it is tough, you know? I mean, I know even in my own district, you know, getting, getting folks to engage in conversations is worthwhile work, but it's hard work. And it is something that, it does take all of us in the community to help spread the word. And so, you know, I know the district has, has worked really hard to, to spread the word. And, you know, where there are gaps, you know, feedback is appreciated. And, you know, being ambassadors for this with us would be great. Thank you.
I'd like to address those surveys.
Greetings, Dana Moore on ALEAF ISD Parent Taxpayer Aleness. I've heard several times over the past two days talked about two things, the online and the surveys. I've already talked about the online issue. So that should be transparent and candid. The reason why I shared that information about the district being able to make data say whatever it wants is, quite honestly, you're going to have to overcome the challenges. People had 12 years of having data manipulated. We don't trust the survey. We've been turning the surveys as an employee, as a parent, as a community member, and we've watched the changes from you guys. Or you pick and choose what information you got out of it, and you show us what you want to have. That's why I referenced that. What I said was audio and video recording. Don't take my word for it. Do an overall request for the video. That's why I talked about the council member, Tiffany Thomas, ex-school board member, Tiffany Thomas and ex-school board member, Natasha Butler. Don't take Dana Moore's word for it. Call them and ask them. Request the documents yourself, request the video yourself. You have to overcome all that. We don't trust those surveys. We don't trust the leadership. We don't trust the individuals that's going to make these decisions. And in order to gain our trust back, we got to see some action in practice. It's like a bad relationship, right? You don't just abuse somebody and then come back and apologize, and then they're not worried about you coming back and abusing them. Again, the abuse is still more outside of the superintendent being here. And that's our concern.
Sue, quick comment regarding that. Our firm is working at the will of the school board. You mentioned that you had worked with other board members, city council members, et cetera. So we report directly to your school board. We do not report to your superintendent. We provide all of our information to the board trustees. And so all of the information is going to be very transparent. Everything that you provide here this evening, obviously, the videos, et cetera, are all available to your school board. And we'll be providing, obviously, highlighted information of all the comments to the board in the development of the profile. And of course, your school board will provide information in the development of that profile as well before it's adopted. So please rest assured that your information will not be filtered. It's going to your school board, it's not going to the administration. So hopefully, you can separate those two knowing that we're here to serve the board, not the administration.
Absolutely, thank you. I want to reply to that comment. Dana Moore on ALEAF ISD Parent Taxpayer Aleness. One, are these videos going to go up on the district's website as well? On the board meeting videos, where all the other board meetings are? Or are the meetings posted? That's my main point of the question. And then next, in regards to your statement with the board, and I'll say that with the main room, and I'm sure some are watching, they're part of the problem as well. Then we've been having a superintendent that has been running the school board and running the school district at the same time. So I'm quite concerned about the direction of our board and our superintendent because the school board hadn't had to run the school board in 12 years since H. D. has been there. Now they're in a pickle where they got to learn how to be school board members, and they got to get our trust in our community. So I'm saying on the record and to their face, I don't trust the school board. So I'm concerned about them making those decisions and making data say what they wanted to say. Thank you.
We will make the request that the videos be posted online. I can't promise that. Obviously, I'm not a district employee, but we will share your request with the district. Obviously, you verbalize that, so they're aware of your request. That's next.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions from our community members?
I don't have any additional questions at this time. I do want to remind those that are online, feel free to go back to any of the questions. All four questions are posted. You can go back to question one or jump all the way to four. We're here to listen to the people online, just like those who are sitting before us here this evening.
If I may ask, if the administration, do you know if anybody has joined us in the last five or 10 minutes? New participants there are? Okay, then I'm going to just kind of, you know, because, run it again for those... Oh, do you have a question or comment to add?
I was going to ask...
Can you say it on the mic, please?
Great, yeah. And I'll go ahead, also, kind of the same little opener for those who are joining us online or restate the questions just because I want to make sure everybody is included. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to gather information from the community, really that is reflective of the vision and the values of the community as your board works with us to create a profile for your new superintendent for us to then use in this search process to help facilitate finding the best fit of a superintendent for your district. My name is Sue Dyvar. I am a search consultant with JG Consulting, which is the search firm that your school board has contracted with to help with this process. My colleagues are Michael and Andres, who have been taking notes this evening. We are all, if you are joining us online, if you have any responses to the questions that I'll share, please put those in the chat, and then we'll be read aloud for the privilege of everybody participating to also get the benefit of hearing your input. So the questions that I have presented tonight are, well, number one, what are your current hopes and aspirations for the students of ALEAF Independent School District? So, you know, what are your, what do you, what I tend to say in a lot of my other community meetings is, what are your hopes and dreams for your candidates? Right? What are some of the current celebrations at HF ALEAF ISD? What are the things that are really going well that you're really proud of and you want to make sure that any candidates really know about you that's to gather and shine? What current challenges must be overcome in order to achieve the expressed shared hopes and aspirations? Like, you know, hey, you know, we could do better if this were true. And then what characteristics and traits and experiences would be beneficial for the new superintendent to have so that they have the best chance of moving ALEAF ISD forward and achieving those expressed aspirations? So those of you that we haven't heard from, if you've got things that you want to share, those of you that are watching from home online, please type your comments into the chat. While we're waiting to see if anybody has anything to add tonight, I'll just remind everybody that if you go to alefisd.net, you can find on that top homepage, it's kind of in the middle at the top, you can find a link where you can see the timeline for this search. You can have access to a survey that you can complete yourself, and you can also share with others. There's also a list of other upcoming community meetings. If you, you know, really want to have a person and weren't able to tonight, you're watching at home, or you, you know, have friends or colleagues that want to join in the meeting, you can see those future dates and times. I'm also going to share the JG Consulting website. It's jgconsulting.us. So if you have any questions directly for the search firm, you can access our contact information on that. So are there any further questions or comments online?
We have no questions at this time. Just a reminder, our next town hall meeting coming up is August 16th at 6:00 p.m., right there in the Center for Talent Development. And then again, town hall meeting number four is during the lunch hour from 12 to 1:00, and that's on August 18th, right here in LA. So please go online, look at that. There may be additional meetings that will be added. So that document will be updated, I'm sure, you know, every day or at least every week regarding quest taking advice.
Excellent, thank you.
Hello, from Rockland, my name is Adeswa Amori, and I am the current Communication Applications Teacher, Public Speaking Coach, and Debate Coach at ALEAF Saylor High School. Yay! I'm actually ALEAF-raised, ALEAF-made, ALEAF-paid, as I would like to say. So I've been in this district since I was at Sneed Elementary School a whole bunch of years ago. So when you talk about institutional memory, I definitely have that ingrained in my soul. To any of my students who may be listening right now, hey y'all, this is what we would call an impromptu speech. An impromptu speech is when you're given a question or a prompt, and you give yourself about two, maybe five minutes to kind of figure out your answer. So thank you so much for restating the questions. And for all of my students, this is us doing a real-world application of what we learn all the time in the classroom. And that's kind of the purpose of my speech here today. I started speech and debate in 7th grade because my theater teacher said that I talked too much. She was like, you need to go somewhere where you can talk all you want to. So in 7th grade, for 7th period, I was sent to the debate classroom, even though theater was on my schedule. And shout out to Ms. Teresa Lamb. That was the best decision that she ever made in her high school career, I mean, her elementary school career. Because here I am, all of these years later, still doing what she accused me of doing too much of, talking. Okay? So, going, kind of jumping up to the present. I know that area superintendent Cherry has been on staff for about four or five years now. I remember when he was at Hastings High School as the coordinating principal. While he was there at Hastings High School as a coordinating principal, he had the prestigious honor of being the principal prestigious honor of being the principal of senior and junior and sophomore, Abigail Omenali, who is most noted in the district for being the 2015 national champion in dramatic interpretation, okay? Not only that, but her younger brother became the 2018 UIL champion in prose interpretation, okay? Last year, in 2021, in the midst of the pandemic, Elsick High School was able to generate national champions in world schools debate. And myself, I know we don't tell ourselves too much, but the Amy Taylor kids do what they need to do, and they need to get it done. We have our recognition as well. I say all of this to say that a lot of individuals who are in leadership in ALI ISD have the honor and prestige of claiming students that excel exceptionally within the realm of speech and debate as a part of their accolades. But as far as attention, or how can I say it, support, has not always been met. And I know that personally, because I was had the prestigious honor of serving as the host site tournament director for the TFA State 2019 Tournament held at ALI Taylor High School, an event that brought not only statewide, not only nationwide, but international recognition, because we also offered the World Schools Debate Championship for the state of Texas on our campus. I say all of that, and I should feel a level of prestige and just absolute pride, because the reason why I put in all of those man-hours and dedicated that time in order to make that event happen, is because, like I told y'all before, I'm ALI-raised, ALI-made, ALI-paid. So, the benefits of my students come before sometimes my own sanity, right? Raising money is a big issue. We did what we needed to do. We accomplished our goals. And unfortunately, I had to tell two sets of seniors, as in two different graduating years, that even though we accomplished all of the accolades, and we hit all of the goals, and we achieved all of the milestones, we were not able to do what other surrounding districts were able to do in the world of speech and debate, simply because we do not have administrators, we do not have board members, and we do not have a superintendent who understands the importance of speech and debate. So this is the reason why I've taken time out of my life schedule, and instead of driving home just to come out around here for a couple of hours, just to make sure that I was at this town meeting to ask and implore not only you, the consulting company, but also many board members that might be here in attendance at this meeting, to please take a step back and take a hard look at the benefits that speech and debate as a whole has provided, not only to the students in our district, but to our district as a whole. Because there are international countries who know about this little, little district in ALI in the Houston area that's not HISD, but also be able to say, hey, guys, we had the runner-up for the National Association for Urban Debate League Championships in 2019. Hey, during the pandemic, that low socioeconomic school district was able to produce not only one, but two different sets of national champions? That even till last year, had multiple schools, Taylor and Elsick, represent us at the UIL State Academic Meet for Speech and Debate? The representation and our students doing it is real. But if there's one common factor in a lot of the conversations that I have, before the students are able to be self-actualized, is, that's too hard for our kids. That's not something for ALI kids to do. ALI kids don't want to go to the Harvard Speech and Debate Tournament. ALI kids don't want to go to the Berkeley Forum hosted by Emory University. Our kids aren't really concerned about going to Berkeley. But from someone who has literally been in the speech and debate trenches over half her life, I can tell you, you'd be very surprised at what our students can do. So, in order to directly answer the questions or to directly respond to them, because I kind of did, but not specifically directly, my current hopes and aspirations is that when you leave this meeting, you might have a different perspective on speech and debate. Because let's be honest, if you liked anything about this speech, whether it's my diction, or my cadence, or my enunciation, or the way that I pronounce words, understand that the reason why I'm empowered to articulate myself the way that I am is because of Ms. Teresa Lamb sliding me to the speech and debate classroom when I was in seventh grade, okay? Second question, current celebrations? We've talked about all the, a lot, not all of them. We've talked about a lot of the accolades that our speech and debate students have accomplished from 2019 to present. We even took a dive back to 2015 with Abigail, and 2018 with Fortune. Do we have any representation for them at this level? Not at this time. Third question, our current challenges? Well, we seem to have this idea that our students are not ready for the high levels of competition that have been set before them, that they've already proven that they can accomplish. And finally, characteristics and traits that are needed to move us forward? We need a superintendent that's not only invested in the benefits of fine arts as a whole, but one that is willing, doesn't even have to actually, but willing to understand the benefits that speech and debate has, not only in a competitive sense, but in a real-world application. Because I can almost guarantee you, there's at least 20% of individuals who wanted to show up tonight, but did not, because of glossophobia. Glossophobia is the fear of public speaking. Yet I don't have a public speaking course that I teach on my campus anymore, as of this year. Concerned. So I hope all of this is taken with a grain of salt, of course, because everything in life is subjective. But I hope that after this impromptu speech, and, and link week, that I was able to give this evening, you will see the importance of speech and debate, not just on a local level or at a school level, but at a district level. That being said, I yield the rest of my time to the chair. Thank you.
Go, Taylor.
Did y'all catch all that? It's like an article, like that was beautiful. This is just your diction, this is your message, and how well it was articulated. Kids are lucky.
Oh, that's a rough act to follow. You sure you want to go out there? Absolutely. I'm an ALI alum this as well, so I'm never scared. David Boron, ALI VICE, THE PARENT, TAXPRER, ALUMNIS. Taxpayer in America. I too was in speech and debate in theater, theater gear. My son was 2019 president of theater, and when they went to Nebraska in that war, he was the president as well. So his name is Davon Boron, since we're talking about theater, he advocated for our community. So, I do, I do have a lot of concerns about the district, but at the end of the day, I'm in the ship that I'm concerned about. I'm not talking stuff and moving out of the district. I've been here since the eighties. Like I said, I've been here since I was eight years old. So yeah, I've got a lot of concerns. But my family works in the district, my children are in the district, I work in the district, I pay taxes here, I show up at the meetings when nobody else shows up. So I feel as though, the very least that I could have is a superintendent that's willing to listen to my voice, whether they agree with me or not, whether I agree with them or not. I'm still actively involved. I said when superintendent chambers first got here, I was on these committees for three years and became an educator in this community. But now somehow, the same thing that made me sought after to be on those committees, the same thing that made me sought after to be an educator in our community, makes me public enemy number one, right? Because you're falsifying data, and I know it, and I'm concerned about it. But I still want our children to do good. I still have my kids in speech and debate in theater. I'm still actively involved. I'm still concerned about the direction of it. So we got to stop marginalizing community members that have concerns and address those concerns. If they're still in our community, my two children being in this school district is paying for these salaries. My school, my two children being in this community is paying for this building that we're standing in, my tax money is paying for it. So the very least I could do is have my voice heard, and not my voice silenced. Thank you.
Checking in. Got a comment from someone online?
We have two comments coming down the line. We have one comment regarding, similar to what the gentleman was stating in reference to some individuals or rude staff that really didn't elaborate, but that's what they shared. And then, one comment that came in said characteristics would be a positive, problem-solving, structured, and welcoming person. And along with that, person says, I would say the district needs to be more friendly in a way. And I don't know if you want to share. There's one in Spanish that came in. There, what do you mind?
Somebody shared, hola, estas, yo quisiera saber a qué se refiere la reunión porque yo no entiendo inglés. La reunión es para, este, para saber lo que los padres, los estudiantes, y los miembros de la comunidad quisieran para el superintendente de la escuela. Las preguntas están en línea, y también podemos repetirlas si quisieran. Ahorita las voy a poner para que ellas puedan ver en línea.
They just were asking for some translation, and to what, for what the meeting was.
Oh, I have a question.
Thank you.
Sorry, I apologize. I was just trying to slide one, and I thought y'all appreciated you not coming to the mic.
Greetings. David Boron, ALI VICE, THE PARENT, TAXPRER, ALUMNIS. This is my last one. My concern, or my question is, can you tell me, or tell us, how many people participated online yesterday, or how many people participated online today? And are you capturing that data to see how fruitful it is?
I don't know how, I don't know how many people are online. I know the district's monitoring all of the activity, and yes, they are tracking all of that data, and they share that information with us. So then going back to a previous comment, you know, what information do we need to share with the board in order to have productive meetings where people are involved throughout the community? So, all of that information is readily available to your school board and to the firm, JG Consulting.
Will it be available to the public? Because I'd be curious to know how, how many people were involved in this process?
That's something we certainly can request.
Okay.
The, the school district to do. I can't speak on behalf of them or make that decision for them, but we will make that request for you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Great job, Sue.
Yes, I love what I do. So, we've reached the top of the hour. If there are not any further comments or questions from our online participants or anyone here, I will say thank you. I will safely home tonight. I thought I heard a little thunder, maybe. So hopefully we get some rain, but it doesn't cause any trouble for anybody getting home tonight. So, thank you again. And just one last reminder, for anybody in the room or watching at home, you can go online to alisd.net, and you can find more information about this process, future meetings, timeline, and the survey. Please share it with your friends, your fellow parents, your colleagues. Everybody have a good evening and a safe time home.
Thank you for your time.